Ladies and gentlemen, let's call the planning board meeting to order for Tuesday, March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all. Let's see here, we've got to appoint some alternates into voting positions. We've got Paul's space open and Neil's space open, so both of our alternates will be voting members tonight. Does that work for everybody?
Works for me.
So that gives us a s- seven-member board. We got it, okay. Uh, the second item on our agenda after the call to order is our, um, I'm sorry, let me do the usual announcements here. Let me remind everybody who will address the board tonight to make sure the microphone is turned on and speak clearly into it so the folks at home can hear. Please also, um, clearly identify yourself for the record, um, because our minutes are being prepared from the recording. Our next planning board meeting after tonight is currently scheduled for April fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, at seven P M. In the Matthew Thornton Room, which is this room. Okay, now we are up to our planning and zoning administrators report. Casey, do you have anything for us?
Uh, nothing at this time.
Does any member of the board have questions for Casey or the staff?
Not yet.
Seeing none, thank you very much. Uh, okay, uh, then item three on our agenda is Aubrey DePlease as the applicant and owner. Continued review of conditional use permit for a Level Two holistic wellness home occupation. The parcel is located at sixty-six Tinker Road in the R One Residential by Soils and Aquifer Conservation Districts. Tax map two C, lot fifty-six, case number Planning Board two thousand and twenty-two dash three. And it's been continued from our January fourth, February first, February fifteenth, and February fifteenth, planning board meetings. Casey, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from our applicant?
Uh, no, just, but just to jog the planning board's memory, um, you last met with this applicant, uh, in early January. Uh, this case was continued so that the applicant could gather some more information to present to the board, uh, to submit a plot plan, uh, and for staff to, uh, ask legal counsel if this would be, if this would partially be considered an agricultural use, uh, which that is the case, the, the proposal for the outdoor gardens would be treated as an agricultural use and therefore allowed.
Thank you, Casey, and welcome back and good to see you again. I'm glad you're able to get the materials together that we were looking for back in January. So, uh, begin by introducing yourself and then tell us where we're at with the project. I think some, we've got a new member or two, so it might be helpful to, um, tell the whole story. I can hear you, but I can't.
Green light.
Yeah, get it a lot closer to you.
Better?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Aubrey DePlease, and as mentioned, I'm looking to, um, do a holistic wellness business at home. Adding a garage, which, do you have the drawing that I dropped off? I have another one if needed, but, um.
I think it looks like this, Bob.
Yep.
Uh, so I would be adding a garage with an upstairs space for, um, a service room or two, and then the agricultural piece, I guess I just have a couple of questions, clarifying questions on that part as well.
Okay.
Cause we weren't sure if that had to be a separate application and meeting, or... But, uh, Casey, you just said that the gardens were approved, so I just want to get a little bit of clarification on that piece.
Sure, I think, um, everything that you have on your plan, one way or another, can be handled all together at once. Um, hopefully tonight, and then we'll be able to, um, have that final resolution for things, so.
Okay.
No need to bring anything back, but, um, let me ask you, um, so several of us were here in January, but just start at the beginning with what it is that you're proposing with your plan for the home occupation and tell me about the whole business.
Yeah, so, um, it would entail, um, life coaching, Reiki, um, a couple other energy work type of, uh, wellness pieces, um, like tarot card readings, things to that nature. Agriculturally, I want to do garden share and, um, some classes about gardening and, you know, um, different things like that. So, um, gardening tips one-on-one for New England, organic and all-natural gardening classes, things to that extent.
Okay. How many people do you think would come to your classes at a particular time?
I think for the classes, that would be when there would be the most, uh, people present, and I would say probably limiting, limiting it to ten people per class.
Okay. Do you have enough parking spaces for ten?
Yes, um, so I drew parking on there, uh, it's hand-drawn, as you can tell, but, um, there's plenty of land, so where the garage is, if I actually move that a little closer to the house, I met with another contractor yesterday. So if I move that a little closer to the house, I can definitely fit a lot more parking spaces in there.
So the garage is proposed and everything else on your plan is, is, exists?
Yes. Yep.
Okay, and then above the two-car garage is where you would have people do all of the activities that are indoor activities that you listed.
Correct.
Is that right?
Yep.
Would you ever do, i- is the garage necessary to do that, or would you proceed and do those things in your house?
It's not necessary, but it would be more comfortable.
Okay.
And then, of course, if I had a class and it was raining out or something, being indoors there would be better suited.
That makes sense. And then for the, um, agricultural use for the, um, various kinds of gardening interests and classes that you talked about, how many people would you have come to those at any particular time?
Well, the garden share could vary depending on how many, so when I did it a couple of years ago, I, there were about six families. Um, so some days it was just, you know, one throughout the day, and sometimes on weekends it would be everybody at once.
Okay, so those are less classes as much as they are garden share kind of a thing, are people gonna come tend it whenever they need to or want to?
Yep.
Okay. Are there classes and educational opportunities that are out there with the garden and
Yes.
part of the other things?
Yep.
What would those look like?
Um, so I have like different, you know, like bat boxes, bee boxes, things like that, um, so just kind of, I guess, kid-based, um, so if, you know, if there's families participating in the garden share, having little fun activities for them to kind of learn about wildlife and pollination and all that good stuff that comes along with gardening.
I think last time we talked a lot about employees or independent contractors coming to help you with your business, and I think that that has evolved a little bit since we first met. What's the current plan for people who don't live here coming here to work?
So it would be, and that's where we were kind of hung up on the agricultural versus the wellness piece. So for the wellness piece, there would only be the one person employed that's non-resident.
Okay.
Um, for the gardens, it's more of a voluntary thing, I guess, um, there's not really, wouldn't be anybody employed unless it's like regular, you know, maybe hiring somebody to mow the lawn, or, you know, things to that extent, but not.
That makes sense.
I don't envision anybody being actually, like, there's no store to run or anything like that, so.
Understood. So when I was talking about coming to work, I didn't mean people that were volunteering for their own garden space or that kind of thing, even though that is work. But that's not what I meant, I was like thinking either employees or independent contractors.
I'm thinking no employees for the agricultural piece, at least not today, um, if that was, I'd plan on coming back, cause it'd be a bigger plan at that point, so.
That makes sense. That makes sense. Let's see, what else did we leave sort of open to be, to be resolved when we met in January?
From my memory, it was that, um, the employee was the big one, and then looking at the plan, and if there was any questions around location, I think Nelson mentioned lighting, um, the driveway gravel versus pavement. I don't think, I don't think I put that on that picture, um, so right now the horseshoe in the front is paved and the rest is gravel, but it does need to be refilled, so with the garage going in there, I would at least
The gravel get replenished?
redo that, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Cause it's like slowly turning into a lawn.
So, the parking spaces that you drew near the garage and near the carriage house, um, I think it's helpful to see sort of where you envision people parking, and you got an employee parking space here plus the driveway. It seems like the space number one, two, and five would kind of interfere with each other and be hard to use at the same time.
Yeah, so that's, again, I didn't actually measure those parts, um, so as I put in the garage, so in the one you're looking at, the garage is placed on an old foundation, it used to be a barn many years ago.
Okay.
Um, so the first contractor I had come out and looked at it, he said it would just be easier to put it there, cause he'd have to like flatten all that out anyway. But in the contractor that I talked to this week, I'm thinking it closer to the house, so that opens up, I'd still have to fill in that foundation and flatten that all out, but it gives a lot more room for parking and openness over there.
Okay.
And if I'm putting in that two-car garage, I might take down that carriage house that you're seeing over there, cause it's pretty old. And just get that out of the way for another parking spot or two.
I understand. Which way did the garage door base?
The garage door, um, so again, kind of different, the first contractor wanted to face him towards the house, but I actually, in talking to this one this week, I think I'd prefer the garage doors to face the street. I think in the drawing you have, they're facing the house.
I think that they are, although I don't know if a car could make that turn between the house.
Well, that's what, yeah, that and I just, the way that, cause also the sun, the way that the sun hits and the way that I want the long wall facing the sun, so.
Okay.
Put the garage doors towards the street.
That makes sense, so your car and whoever else lives with you will be parked in the garage?
Yes.
And then all these other cars would be parked around it or in the driveway and as needed, and if people sort of, um, queued up and blocked each other in, that's just sort of had to work it out when the class is over or whatever.
Yeah, preferably keeping that, um, horseshoe part always cleared out, cause that's easiest to get in and out of the driveway, so.
Okay. I think one of the things that we'd want to know for sure is that you're committed to not having anybody park on the street, because that would obviously impact your neighbors as well as, um, in the wintertime, if you were doing any of that, you would have, um, snow piles and snow banks and all that kind of thing to work around.
I always, uh, advise against that. Have people still insist on parking in the street, but for business purposes, no. There would be signage and they would be very well aware.
Yeah, you just want to, you know, follow up and remind your customers who from time to time will do what you didn't expect.
Absolutely.
Do other board members have comments or questions?
Do we have snow storage area?
Snow storage?
Yes.
Um, you mean for plowing?
Yep.
Yeah, where the plows would pile it all up.
Um, I mean, I haven't really had to worry about that recently, but over by the carriage house is usually where it lands.
Where the parking spaces are or next to it, or?
Um, well, like, it has been in front of the carriage house, because I don't use that in the winter really.
Okay.
So it's not impacting parking?
But, I mean, if I took the carriage house down, it could just go over there, there's like, this is just a very small glimpse of the yard in the front.
But, snow storage is not gonna impact your parking?
It won't, no.
Okay.
No, there's plenty of space to push it off behind that, yep.
Excellent, other comments or questions? Nelson?
I have, I have a few questions on the, on the plan itself. First of all, um, the, uh, it sounds like you haven't really thought this all the way through yet, that you're not sure where the, where the garage is gonna be, where the entrances to the garage are gonna be, and, uh, and whether the carriage house is gonna be there or not, and you're still working it out, is what I hear.
Well, I'm pretty decisive on the garage door spacing the street because of the shape of the building and to get the most benefit of the sun.
But that's not shown here on this sketch.
Right, yeah, cause that was a month ago, right? So, I have been planning along the way.
Yeah, it's just, if we're gonna approve something, we, we oughta see what we're approving and which, which way things are going. Uh, the, um, the, uh, text, is this still applicable, this, this that you wrote? Because this has some descriptions of the site, which
What part are you looking at?
Well, let's just start with number one, um, it talks about outhouses and yurts, and those aren't shown here.
Right, cause last meeting we decided that that, I would have to come back for that portion of it. If that wasn't part of this decision being made.
Okay, then that part of the text doesn't apply.
Correct.
Okay, we're not approving the yurts or the outhouses. I question whether or not we can approve an outhouse in the state of New Hampshire, whether it's a legal use. I, I would have to consult, um.
Right, yeah, and last meeting we talked about, um, a porta potty, it was just the verbiage, I used outhouse, but, yeah.
Yeah, okay, that, that would probably be, uh, acceptable, I'm sure that's acceptable.
Yeah.
They're everywhere, hey, okay. When you talk about the, uh, the porch on the garage, and I don't see any porch on this garage, is that?
I didn't draw it on that one, apologies, I have it on this one.
Do you want to share?
Do you wanna see it?
For the drawings that you did and the one that you turned in to us, um, is there any scale to it to identify how many feet per square or something like that?
Not for the outside so much, the buildings I did, um, two feet per square.
Okay.
But the outside, I, I mean, middle of winter, I haven't really gotten out there to measure exact yet, to be honest.
Uh, yeah, the dimensions of your garden aren't terribly critical for, because of it's an agricultural use, you can garden everywhere you want.
The house and the garage are, um, two feet per square.
Okay. So this says a balcony, um, in the rear part of the garage, eight feet by twenty-four feet.
Yep.
Can you pass this around so everybody gets a look at it? So by balcony, is that sort of the upper floor only and not on the ground floor?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Oh, okay, that does not show on the, on the plan that we have, but you do show some other things. Why did you make the garden in three different little patches instead of a continuous garden?
Just cause, I don't know, it's where it landed. I started with G one first and then added another one, and then added another one, just kind of progressed through.
So those are like that, and that's the way you wanna leave them?
Well, they have irrigation hooked up, so yeah, those are staying.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are they raised bed gardens, or?
No, they're in the ground, yeah. Yeah, each one has like, uh, irrigation hooked up, and then, um, like I redid my kitchen, so the old metal sink is like out there and plumbed in, hooked up on the outside of the garden, they have like different hoses all hooked up, so it's like hooked up, ready to go.
Okay. Okay, if that's the way you want it, it just seemed a little strange. You, there's a, in your notes to us, which will be, need to
Share with everybody, Nelson.
Oh, sorry, yeah, here you go.
And also, Nelson, there's, uh, different soil types, so the bigger garden, G three on there, the biggest one, that's a lot more sandy, so it's good for like, uh, corn and things like that, and then on the other side of the yard, it's more, um, rich soil, so depending.
Why is that little, uh, there's a little cutout in, in the picture?
Cause there's a tree.
Oh, okay.
It used to be a big pine tree, it's cut down to a stump now.
Oh.
But, it's in the way.
Okay. Your notes, uh, oh, pass it over, yeah. Yeah. Your note on, uh, it's number seven B, says, "I've tried to inquire about a curb cut to make entering and exiting the driveway even smoother, but was told by the town that the drain system makes it impossible to do this. I would like to revisit that as well if possible." What, what does that mean?
So, I actually have, I've talked to a few different departments with the town, um, there's like a bump when you pull into the driveway, so it's kind of like a little bit of a lip. So I asked about, I thought it was just like a curb, you know, cut the curb and make it flat and smooth, so you just pull in the driveway. Um, especially on that road, I actually talked to the chief of police, because there's people speed up and down that road, so trying to turn into the driveway is a bit of a, you know, people get mad behind you, cause you're turning into the driveway. So I'd like to really like flatten it out some, and when I had it paved, they tried to smooth it out a little bit, but the town said it was like some drainage something or other.
It probably keeps the water from running onto your property from the road.
Possibly, yeah, but.
Maybe you wanna leave it there.
Yeah.
Yeah, is, a couple of approaches to it, one is leave it there, but the other is to incline the last little bit of your driveway towards the road, so the water won't go up your driveway from it, but
Yeah, yeah.
Either way, um, whatever that is, is outside of our ability to deal with and approve, so.
I just wanted to know what it meant, was that part of the application?
Yeah, absolutely, and we, I'm making notes of the various things in the narrative that we have to make sure we comment on, because they're not going forward as part of the idea, as part of the plan.
Yeah. Okay, the only other thing I had was missing the scale on this drawing that we have, and maybe you wanna give us a drawing that is the drawing, maybe you wanna wait a while until you get your contractor lined up, and
Well, I already, like I said, the one that I just provided is the one, it's just a matter of getting out there with a measure, tape measure and but, I mean, I didn't think that I needed to do inch by inch on the drawing, it is what it is.
Yeah, you're right on that, and I just want to circle back on the idea that what we have before us is a conditional use permit request, which actually doesn't require a plan at all, so the plan's sort of informative or instructive or illustrative, but, um, it's not a site plan review, so.
So what are we reviewing, the, just the use, nothing else?
Uh, whether they meet the conditional use criteria that are set out in our regulation, I think it's probably outlined in the memo.
Yeah, the, the memo has the last two remaining criteria that need to be met, um, the previous memo, um, is also in your packet, dated, I believe, January, oh, December thirtieth, and that goes through all of the criteria that are necessary to be met.
I didn't quite hear what you, what you said at the end.
So the memos do touch upon all of the criteria, um, staff felt that we just needed clarification on the criteria of, um, there only being one commercial vehicle, and there only being one, uh, employee that is not a resident. Uh, so as, as long as those two are met, then we feel that this meets the intent of a home occupation.
Okay, but what about all of the stuff that's on this memo here that they're asking for, and the nature, and the nature of the business and so on with the, uh, the, the yurts and the outhouses and the, uh...
Yeah, so the yurts are not a part of this proposal, if she does propose the yurt, she will need to come back to the board.
Then, then this whole document doesn't apply, right?
So
Well, parts of it do, and we can
Yeah, parts of it do, and so staff can work with the applicant after a, um, an approval from the board to clean up the application so that it matches better with what is being proposed, you, if you want, you can add a condition to any approval to make that more clear to staff.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking is
I certainly would.
Yeah, when we got to the point of, of a motion, if that's the will of the board, that it would be for approval with the notations that there isn't an outhouse, but potentially a porta potty, and that there aren't any yurts, and that we don't have any jurisdiction over curb cuts, and anything else related to this narrative that needs to be a little bit different, and also that the plan is the larger plan that has the porch on the garage with the doors facing the road.
That's all I have.
Does anyone else have comments or questions? Maureen?
Um, my only question is I, I see the recommendation is that there be eight vehicles permitted on the site, but you're looking to have ten customers, uh, clients for a class, how would that be handled?
Um, again, there's plenty of room for parking, I just drew on there what was around the front part of it. But where the garage sits, um, so what I was saying earlier, moving that closer to the house there. So that's not a drive-through, it's just the house and then the garage.
Okay.
And then that, there's like a, um, I didn't draw it on there, but there's like an old foundation, so it's just like an empty foundation that used to be a barn. So when I'm building the garage, that would all be filled in, they'd level out all that, and then that would open up, I don't know, thirty by forty feet for additional parking there. So there's like a drive-through, there's like a, you can kind of drive around that part of it too, so it could drive around and be more spaces for parking.
And just to ask you, why is the limit eight that the staff's recommending?
Uh, I believe just based on the plot plan that was submitted, um, staff felt that eight was a good number, but that's just a recommendation, if the board wants to change that number in their approval, the, the board can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other comments, questions, members of the board?
How many parking spaces are shown on this plan that we just got tonight?
I didn't add parking spaces on this one.
Oh, okay.
I wasn't planning on passing it over, to be honest, I forgot that the garage, I changed the garage doors on there and the balcony, I think that's the only difference.
Yeah. Is the butterfly garden that was on our plan gonna go somewhere else on that one, or is that not part of the plan anymore?
Oh, I just didn't draw it on there, it's not moving, that's stationary.
Okay, but then now there's a porch there on the big plan.
Um, it would be to the left of that.
Okay, on that plan to the left of the balcony?
It's kind of like, yeah, um...
I, I feel like we're getting a little loosey-goosey here with, well, we got this plan and we got this plan, and I'm gonna do this and I'm gonna do this, and we don't know, at least I don't know what you're asking us to approve.
Okay.
That's just my feeling.
And I feel like I brought a plan that you asked for, and I was told it didn't have to be to scale necessarily, I just needed to draw out the yard, which I did. I told you what I'm looking for, I wanna do life coaching and Reiki with clients, and then separately, I wanna do agricultural stuff, garden share, classes, outdoor activities, that's what I wanna do.
This just showed up, and it's different than what's in our
The only thing that's different is the garage. The doors moved to now facing the road instead of facing the house and the balcony.
And the parking.
What's, what's the pool?
That's not anything to do with anything we're talking about tonight.
Well, it's on your plan.
Yeah, cause I wasn't
And it's not on the other one.
That one, that has nothing to do with tonight.
I'm sorry, but these two things don't coincide, and I understand what you're trying to do, and I have no problem with it, but
So what do you need from me, what, what do you need?
I wanna know what you're, you're trying to do.
I just said, I want to service clients with life coaching and Reiki in the garage, above the garage.
What's the plan that you're trying to do?
I'm telling you.
No, you're, you're telling me some, some verbiage.
Okay, so what exactly are you looking for?
So, most of the time as we're approaching these, we're using the plan to understand the business that you're trying to run on the property.
I get that.
And so, with the one that we started out with in our package, which has evolved a little bit, and plans can evolve, understood. Now we've got another plan over here, which has things on it that weren't included in this one, not just that the garage is rotated, but the garage has a balcony and the butterfly garden's in a different place, and there's a swimming pool, and then there's no parking, so there's
Right.
quite several things that are different.
Yep.
And ultimately, when we vote, we're voting to let you do whatever it is that you drew on a plan, but since it's sort of
So the one that I gave you is more accurate, the only difference of what I submitted to the town is that the doors are going to face the street, and there's a balcony on the back of the garage. Which might not even be there, because I just got the estimate for all of it, and it's a little ridiculous, to be honest.
But there's no parking on the plan with the garage turned on it.
Right, I'm saying the one that you have is more accurate, the one that I submitted to the town that you all have a copy of, not the one I brought tonight.
This one I have.
Yes, that one's more accurate.
It is, but it's still missing things, it doesn't have the balcony on the garage, the doors aren't facing the right way.
Does the balcony, okay, so, can I, I just wanna understand, because the balcony is, I picked a garage that I liked, and it has a balcony, and I talked to the contractor yesterday and he gave me a price on it, and it's ridiculous, so the balcony might not be there. Does the balcony, is that like important to the decision happening here, whether I have a balcony on the back or not? I just wanna understand where I'm at, because do I need to go through the entire process first and draw it to scale for all of you to look at? With a finalized, I put my deposits down and here's what's happening? Or can I get a yes or a no, so that I know that I can make that investment for my business, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I do know what you mean, let's, let's work through that together and figure out where we're at with certain things, because, um, some of the things that are different between these plans, like the location of the butterfly garden, is an entirely agricultural use, and you can put that anywhere you want, or not have it at all, and I don't care, the gardens are the exact same thing. Um, it's interesting to know where they are, so we can get a sense of the scope and the distance for things. The The balcony on the garage is part of that space where you were talking about having people come for classes. And that's where it sort of does relate to, what are you asking us to say makes sense or not? And part of that relates to the fact that the, the home-based business can only occupy a certain number of square feet on your property. I think five hundred is the limit.
Five hundred, yeah.
Three or five, yeah, five hundred.
And so the, the twenty-four by twenty-four space over your garage is probably every bit of the twenty-five, five, the five hundred that you're permitted to use. And if the balcony was also part where classes were going to occur there, that's how these things kind of all relate together.
Gotcha.
But I certainly get the idea that as an applicant who comes to the board once in a lifetime, you would have no way to know that. So that's why we're trying to help walk through all those details. Now, some of the things that are different on one plan or another, I think your intuition is correct, that I don't care where the gardens are and if they're moved and they're a little expanded or they're not. And if the balcony doesn't have anything to do with the home-based business, any more than the place that you're going to park the cars on the first floor of the garage. Then maybe we don't have to know that detail and we can work through it. But parking for your customers that are coming, and the eight or maybe ten that the staff thinks we should talk about or you want to talk about. Those are absolutely things that we, don't need to know that the parking is going to be exactly in this space. But confident that there's a plan, that there's enough room for eight cars or ten cars or whatever the number is. So that's how we're all trying to puzzle it all together.
No, that makes sense. So with all that said, I would say let's just stick with the plan that I submitted to the town, because that is the most accurate with parking. And on that one, the only difference is that the doors are not facing the front. I'm not counting on a balcony, I don't feel like that's even a conversation piece at this point. If there is a balcony, it wouldn't be used for business, it would be for myself. So that's not part of it at all, to be honest. And the parking, as I've mentioned, there is plenty of room for eight to ten cars already, but once that foundation is covered and leveled out, that's, I would say, at least another five cars could park there.
Okay. Board members, what do you think?
Which? I'm, I'm looking at what you submitted, and there are six parking places.
Okay.
And you're talking about leveling some, are you talking about leveling the carriage house?
There is just an empty foundation where a barn used to exist a long time ago, so the house and the, everything was built in the eighteen hundreds, so it's extremely old.
Where's that?
Where, where's the, where's the barn, barn foundation?
It's kind of where the garage is sitting.
So you've got a two-car garage that's twenty-four by twenty-four?
Yep. So which is smaller than the foundation that exists right now. I would say the foundation is approximately like thirty by forty.
All right, so we've got the garage there and you've got six parking places.
Yes.
And we're looking for ten, so where are the additional four?
So once that's leveled out, there would be parking on the other side of the garage.
What's leveled out?
Right now, the foundation is still there, there is no garage today.
Okay.
So the foundation, that would have to all be like torn down, filled in, leveled out.
So you're not going to have a garage?
I don't today. The plan is to put one in.
Yeah, part of the space, the barn foundation is bigger than the garage, so when it goes away, there'll be some extra space to the.
Yes.
Left of the garage in this picture, where I guess maybe is a space or two or three or something, you tell me, is what you're proposing.
Do you have the pictures of the property?
I'm looking at this picture, so.
I know, I had passed in, I had like taken pictures of the actual property. I don't know if you guys had those to look at.
So what you're saying is you're going to add parking spaces behind what's outlined as the carriage house?
This is the house?
Yep.
Right here is like an empty foundation right now, so that would all be leveled out, put the garage in there.
This is Harold.
Let me try to keep you by a microphone so the folks at home can hear you.
All right, hang on, hang on a minute. You, all right.
Sorry. So, so the house, to the left of the house, there is the foundation, right now it's just a foundation, empty, it's about approximately thirty by forty feet. So this would only take up a portion of that, and if I move that closer to the house, so like, kind of like this is showing, that would open up. Everything else that's flat now because that foundation is filled in.
You're talking about adding parking spaces here?
This, on that side, correct, yes, yes.
That's all I need, thank you.
Okay, so there'll be a couple of parking spaces on the left of the garage?
Yes.
Yes.
And then some in your circular driveway?
Yes.
And it looks like, I know that this is tough to figure out the scale, but you know, five, six cars could probably be in the circular driveway pretty easily.
As long as they can get in and out independent of one another.
Well, they may, they probably won't be able to, but I think that's up to them to sort out with their classes.
Well, but I think, I think you've got plenty of room, three or four parking places on the left-hand side of the garage.
You wouldn't even, if anything, I'd say maybe one or two in the round driveway, but.
So I don't think parking is going to be a problem.
No.
Yeah. Yeah, there is quite a bit of acreage. Okay, so I think that I'm understanding it a little bit better. We're probably going to have the doors facing the other way, but otherwise the garage is the same with some parking spaces in front of it, some by the carriage house, some over to the left.
Yep.
Board members, what else are you interested in knowing about the plan that we're given, understanding that as a home occupation, it's not a site plan review? Where we need everything scaled like we always do with engineering designs.
Well, I think we should see what we're approving. I, I don't think this quite covers it because of the things we've been told and the. Things that are said and so on, so I would like to see a different site plan, if you will.
But it's not a site plan review.
It's not a site plan review, but it's, shows the layout of the property and what's being proposed here.
It is, it's.
And I think we should see that before we approve it.
Perhaps so. The, the plan itself is, I said before, is illustrative to help us understand what it is that she's trying to do with her property. But we pretty routinely review, consider and make decisions on a home occupation with no plan at all. And we just ask them, you know, with photographs, show me where you're going to park and show me where the light's going to be.
Usually, that's true, for indoor, most of our home occupations have to do with indoors of existing buildings. And this is quite different, you know, it's.
I, I think most of this is indoor.
It will all be indoor except for the agricultural.
With the exception of the agricultural, which.
We're told to have hands off.
We don't care about.
It's indoors of a plan, of a plan that doesn't exist. I mean, it's indoors of a building that doesn't exist.
I have no problem with what we've got here. I, I really don't.
Other members, thoughts? Questions, discussion? Okay. Are there any abutters or citizens who wish to weigh in?
I was just going to ask one question about the branded vehicle.
Yes.
There was some discussion in the memo about that. Are you, you're planning to have one vehicle with a.
There would, yeah, there wouldn't be more than one in there.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
What did she say? I didn't quite hear.
Oh, sorry, there would not be more than one branded vehicle in the driveway, on the property.
But, okay, yeah, but there still is one somewhere.
There is not currently, no.
But you, you expect to have one, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Further discussion by members of the board. Brian, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to sort of head to the public before you were trying to ask a question, but. Well, yeah, well, they're not exactly lined up for questions, but we'll consider us to having, having had a public hearing and opened, gavelled it open and closed. What is the will of the board? Lynn?
I will recommend that the board grant conditional, final approval of the conditional use permit for the home occupation. With the following conditions to be completed within six months, or the approval shall become null and void, based on the staff memo.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you for the motion and for the second. I think that we ought to include in our motion, cleaning up the narrative application as discussed here tonight, so there's no yurts and outhouses and things, working with staff, so that's one condition of approval. That the plan that we've been given is, is not a site plan, and we're not approving any of the elements on it, that it's just illustrative. But that it ultimately be updated in the file with the office.
That's part of my motion.
Sounds like part of the motion and part of the second. Is there anything else that people think ought to be clarified, just to make sure we know what we've got with kind of a partial application and a lot of things that were presented to us and discussed here?
I'd be satisfied with that. I'm okay with it.
You're okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any other discussion items? Okay. With that in mind, there's a motion and a second. Casey, do you need anything other than the details for what we want in the motion for conditions or the rest of that?
The conditions were clear to me. Does the board want to stick with that eight number for, for maximum vehicles?
Lynn, what's your intention?
Ten.
Ten?
Ten.
Is that consistent with your second? Okay. Then, board members, that's what we're proposing, is conditional final approval with all those conditions and cleaning the ones discussed here tonight. Ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven zero zero. Thank you very much for working with the staff, and you have a little bit more work to do with them.
I think what you're doing is, is nice.
Thank you.
And I, I wish you all success.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. So for the drawing, I can add the measurements of where the garage exactly will be, and then the parking spots, is that?
Yeah, and where the doors are going to go and all of that kind of thing.
Okay.
And, and as your plan gets developed, keep the staff updated with how it's changed.
Okay.
Can I take that other one back?
Yes, you can.
He's the only one in existence.
Oh, no, we need that for evidence. Good luck.
Thank you all, I appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thank you. You got a very creative business, and sometimes creative means it's a square peg and we can't fit it in our round hole. Okay, item four on our agenda is Powell Realty of Merrimack as the applicant and Thomas K. Powell as the owner. Continued review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for waiverful site plan review to allow a caretaker accessory dwelling unit within an existing restaurant. The parcels located at five ninety-five Daniel Webster Highway in the C-one limited commercial elderly housing overlay in offer conservation districts and wellhead protection area, tax map sixty-one, lot forty-one. Case Planning Board twenty-two-two-ten. It's continued from February fifteenth, and my understanding is that the applicant has requested another continuance. Casey, what's up? What do they want?
Yeah, so the applicant asked for a continuance to our next planning board meeting, which is on April fifth. I guess she had to bring her kid to an urgent care facility, so she couldn't make tonight's meeting. So it, it'd be a very quick hearing, we think, but we, she asked to be on the April fifth agenda.
Okay. What, what's the will of the board?
Well, I didn't hear, why did, why did they want to postpone?
Urgent care with a kid.
Emergency, yeah. Oh, oh, okay, oh, all right.
Makes sense.
I'll, I'll move we continue to the April.
Five.
Fifth.
Fifth. Meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Seven zero zero.
Before we leave that one, there was a shaded area on the plan that they submitted, there was this shaded area in there. I didn't get what that was about. Is this leftover from a previous plan?
Yes, yep, that's leftover from a two thousand and four plan that has been mocked up just for adding a note about the new residential.
Okay, thank you.
The new old residential area. That's been there since the eighties. Okay, number five on our agenda is Chris Ross as the applicant and seven oh-two Daniel Webster Highway LLC as the owner. Continued review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for a conditional use permit and site plan to construct a five hundred ninety-two unit self-storage facility. The parcel's located at seven oh-two DW Highway in the C-two general commercial district, tax map seventy, lot twenty-three dash one. Case Planning Board twenty-two-two dash fourteen. It's continued from our March one, twenty-two planning board meeting, and I understand the applicant is looking for further continuance. When we go on for this one?
Yeah, so Chris Ross, his mother's in hospice, so he is unable to be here tonight. He asked to be on the next agenda on April fifth. Staff does not recommend that. We recommend a continuance to the April nineteenth meeting. Simply because your April fifth agenda is getting very stacked up at this point, and we think that this would be a larger agenda item. Not to mention that he still has not submitted all the information that the board would want.
So I want to discuss it a little bit, and everybody else wants to discuss it as well. I'm fine with the idea of continuance, obviously the fellow's mom is in hospice, he's got other things on his mind other than this. And I think April nineteenth is the right date, if that's what the staff tells us based on our busy agenda. However, there ought to be a communication to the applicant to supply the materials to the staff by a particular date in order to have a hearing on April nineteenth.
Yep.
Because we're here again with.
Going on and on.
Incomplete information and, and declining to answer the simple questions that the staff had asked in an email, you know, provide this information, no thank you. And I, I just don't think that we ought to be agenda, putting things on the agenda when the applicants haven't supplied the sufficient material to respond to the staff. What are your thoughts on that?
Do we have to continue to a date certain?
If we continue to anything other than a date certain, he'll have to renotice all the abutters, which is what it is.
I have no problem with that.
It is what it is. I mean, I don't want to necessarily create that burden just in the same context that his mom is unwell and, you know, it's, it's, you know, you cut everybody the brakes.
But he also hasn't provided the information that we need, so even if his mom was well, we don't have the information we need.
Yeah, and it would probably be his intention to come here and answer our questions as best we can, in which case we'd have some discussion about whether that was good enough or not.
We'd put it off for another.
I, I'm not, I'm not willing to suggest we. Go to a date certain.
I'd be willing to go along with that. He doesn't have that many abutters, it doesn't look like.
No, there's, I think there's three or four, that's it.
Yeah.
If he has to renotice the abutters, when would he have to do that to be on the April nineteenth agenda?
I'd have to look up the deadline, it's usually about three weeks beforehand, so he still wouldn't have to.
Yeah.
So I, I think. A couple of weeks from now, to, on the twenty-ninth.
So he'd have a couple of weeks from now to handle that and then be able to get on that April nineteenth agenda.
Well, but if mom's, if mom's in hospice, then he may not be able to do that. I'm, I'm wondering if maybe we should. Continue to a May date.
I was just going to ask that, if we can continue out to May, if that's an option.
Which will give him time for mom and notices and anything else he needs to do.
Okay, well, if we pick a May date, then we won't have to do notices because it's a date certain.
Right, yeah.
But also a communication to him that says, complete your application.
Right.
And can we put that in there in writing that says that we want this information by this date in order to be on the agenda by then, or can we not?
Well, we're continuing it to the agenda, but I think we can ask our staff to communicate to them that the board's not inclined to hear it. If he hasn't supplied staff the information in time for the staff to analyze it and give us a memo. Which is probably a week or so before the meeting at least, I think.
The May dates?
The May planning board meeting dates are May third and May seventeenth.
I, I will, I will move we continue it to May seventeenth, subject to him providing. Everything that planning, that community development has requested. That gives him plenty of time for mom and everything else.
Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Second. Casey, is that the right way to frame the motion in terms of getting done what we want to get done?
So basically saying that all the missing information needs to be completed.
Yes.
By our typical smittle date for the May seventeenth meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, if you guys can work with him and have flexibility, that's fine, but I want you guys to have it in time to analyze it and give us a memo. On whether he meets the criteria or not for a conditional use permit.
That gives him time to, to do it, if he's going to do it.
Well.
Barb?
The other thing, as I'm looking at this, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Barbara.
I mean, there are some contingencies there. Because people on hospice.
Yep.
It can be different timelines.
Yep.
Depending what's going on. I guess my other, other question is, Casey, is he aware that he's going to need an alteration of terrain? Permit from D S because he's going to have, he's also going to have soil control by them, the same as Flatley has on their land?
Well, he may not need alteration of terrain, yet to disturb a hundred thousand square feet, which is about two and a half acres of disturbed area to need an A O T.
It's going to be close, I think.
He may, and either way, that would be either a conditional approval for us or something that he pursued on his own.
But what I'm saying is that land is also probably contaminated, like the Flatley land is, because it's. But what I'm saying is that land is also probably contaminated, like the Flatley land is, cause it's surrounding the whole Sangabene. So he will not be able to remove soil from that property. There will be restrictions on him, the same as Flatley.
Certainly could be.
There's an, also an issue with the state of New Hampshire because he's, n- needs a driveway permit. And those people are not forthcoming with driveway permits.
Yeah, I mean, he's not on the cusp of, of doing construction either way, although the driveway permit is another one of those, it's conditional use. That, uh, a condition of approval. Casey, it seems to me that we've insisted in the past that when we do a conditional use permit and a site plan, that they be agended separately. And if so, I think he's gonna be forced to renotice the Butters, right?
If it, if it's agended separately, I would believe so.
Have, have it, hasn't that been our approach with conditional use permits paired with a site plan? Is that they're two consecutive agenda items separately?
You may be correct. I obviously didn't do it that way this time.
Take a look and talk with him about that, but that may mean that he needs two agenda items in April or May or whatever the dates that we picked. May seventeenth and that, um, he's gonna have to notice the Butters anyway.
I think he needs that time to, to do what he needs to do.
I think so too.
So I'm, I'm pushing for the, the end of May.
Okay. So we're clear on what it is that we're asking and get all your stuff submitted, complete applications and, um, agended separately for May seventeenth, and if that means separate notices, then
So be it.
deal with the department. You guys manage it. Is that okay?
Yeah, I'll talk to Tim about that.
Okay. Is the board clear on what it is that we're doing? Then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven, zero, zero.
Can you remind me who seconded that motion?
Uh, Barbara did.
Thank you.
Lynn made it, Barbara seconded. Nelson tried to second, too. He was the second second.
He was the second, second. I wanna mention one more thing on that, uh, uh, item. In that one of the things that's missing, I don't know if it's on your list or not offhand, is the elevations of the buildings. There's no, um, architectural views or anything on the building in my packet.
Okay, I'll make note of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
He's got some work to do. As you think.
Okay. Uh, we are up to item six on our agenda, which is discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern. I don't remember if there are any items of concern that need attention.
Uh, there, there's a couple.
What you got?
So the, the first being uh, it, so this is in your packets. Uh, there is a proposed, uh, three and a half acre solar array, uh, at the F A A site at, um, twenty-five Robert Milligan Road. Uh, this is a governmental land use. They do not need to come to the planning board unless the board requests that they come in to do a non-binding public hearing. So the board can discuss and decide whether or not we want a presentation slash non-binding public hearing for this project.
Thank you for that reminder. What's your, what's the will of the board with, um, hearing the, uh, having them provide us with a non-binding informational session? Typically, these have been useful for certain things when we want the public to know what's going on with a thing and just hear it and understand it. I think we've done it like with the courthouse that was built over here and sometimes we've, we've avoided it when we thought it was boring, but Barbara?
Yeah, I, I would like them to come in and do a presentation on what they're planning. Because even though, um, it's three and a half acres, solar layouts for solar paneling is not pretty. So, might be useful, but you know, it's, it's, uh, sucking up some good land and it's not pretty. So I would like them to come in and at least hear us about and hear what they have to say about what are they doing for landscaping around it, how are they blocking it from, for sightlines, et cetera, even though it's their land.
Doesn't, doesn't hurt to have them come and tell us what they're doing.
Exactly.
Yep.
And I think, I think, you know, anyone who's interested out there, fortunately, it's in a part of town that's not highly residential. But still, people are gonna notice those things going up.
Oh, they'll see it all right. See it from the turn.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Okay, so we wanna have a not, a, a hearing?
Yes.
Please.
Okay, that sounds great. A will of the board or consensus is all that's needed for that item. And then the other discussion or possible, uh, other, other item of concern to discuss or at least to mention to everybody is that on April fifth, uh, before our seven P M. meeting, we're going to have a six P M. meeting with legal counsel for the town to discuss one of the items on our agenda and receive some legal advice on that. So come at six and it'll be probably starting out downstairs in the, um, the meeting room that's right o- outside the council chambers.
And which, which legal counsel is coming?
Uh, Matt Serge.
Yeah, I'm sorry, what date was that, yeah?
That is our April fifth meeting.
And which is the topic we're gonna talk about?
It was the one on Star Drive that got appealed and reconsidered and all of that other fun.
Oh, the, oh, okay, the Star Drive.
It's a truck repair business, but it's also got a universe of other things going on.
Yep, good, we need that.
Okay. Does anyone else have any other items of concern? Casey, did I miss any? Now that you reminded me of them?
That was everything.
Awesome. Okay. Uh, if there are no others, then the approval of our March first twenty-twenty-two minutes are on tap. What do you think?
I approve as, I move we approve as, um, distributed.
Is there a second? Motion and a second to approve the minutes as distributed.
Oh, the minutes. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm paying attention.
Wake up, Nelson.
Uh, okay, page five, hang on. Let's see if I can find it. Oh, typo. Small typo, but it affects the meaning of the sentence. And on page five, line four. Mr. Gepinov began by explaining that they seeking approval to operate a small construction business from their home and stated that the only materials that will be stored on premises will be kept in a shed that is less than five hundred square feet. I think that was the intent of said and, uh, th- those do change the meaning, so I thought it was important.
Okay.
Yeah, Nelson, I took note of that.
Pardon?
I, I took note of those changes and we'll fix those.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else in the minutes? Then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Two abstentions?
Oh, um, voting for them.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, everybody's for except for Jamie and Brian.
Five, zero, two.
That's what we got. Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Count all of that. Jamie, uh, uh, Casey, write it down however you like. All in favor, say aye. Alright, thank you all. Don't forget to turn your microphones off and thank you for the work.